Good afternoon, welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and the Board of County Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials will have the final vote on any of the issues that are before us this evening. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually using the Zoom meeting platform. And so in this virtual meeting, the participants do not have the ability from the public to speak or be seen on the video by default. And to main decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. Each of the items before us this evening will have the ability to, we'll have a public hearing and individuals have the ability to speak. Some of you have signed up in advance, we will call you in the order that you signed up. And then if you have joined us and you would like to speak, we'll give you the opportunity to identify yourself and we'll call on you and you'll be able to speak as well. You can call into tonight's meeting by dialing 1-301-715-8592. And again, during the public hearing, we'll call out your names and we'll ask you, if you haven't been called on yet, but you'd like to speak, you may raise your hand. You can do that digitally by pressing star nine on your phone. And then when you're recognized, we'll ask you to give your name and your address and then you can make your public comments. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is not favorable. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Amendolia?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Chair Busby?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron?
Here.
Commissioner Cutright?
Here.
Commissioner Durkin?
Here.
Vice Chair Kinschen?
Here.
Commissioner Landfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner McIver?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
And Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Just for the rec, just for reference for the rest of the evening, I will probably just call last names to save time.
That sounds good, thank you. We will move to the approval of the minutes and consistency statement from our January 12th meeting. And if there are any changes folks would like to make, you may make those now. If not, we can move to a motion for approval.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, and we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Amendolia?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Cutright?
Yes.
Durkin?
Yes.
Kinschen?
Yes.
Landfrey?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yeah.
McIver? Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, oh, he's there. I was gonna tell you that he might be running late, but it seems he's with us, so. Miller?
Here. Oh, yes, sorry.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Smith, any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Staff does not have any adjustments that we would like to request. We would like to state for the record that all of the notice and requirements were, for, excuse me, were met regarding state and local law notice requirements, I apologize, something just fell off my table. All of the notice requirements were met in accordance with state and local law and those affidavits are on file in the department. Mr. Miller did reach out to me today regarding a signposting for the Selby Avenue case. We did go out and verify that the sign that was posted on Riddle Road is still there and we will make sure that there's a sign replaced in the cul-de-sac. Our signs go missing sometimes, but we did verify that just to make sure. So I appreciate Commissioner Miller reaching out.
Thank you. We will move to our first case and that is case Z20018. That's the Selby Avenue Homes case. And before we go to the staff report, I will recognize Commissioner McIver.
Yes, Commissioner, thanks. I would just like to recuse myself from the case due to a conflict of interest with my employer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we excuse Mr. McIver from the hearing in the Selby Avenue case.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, I missed who made the second.
Amendolia?
Amendolia, great, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Amendolia?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Cutright?
Yes.
Durkin?
Yes.
Kinschen?
Yes.
Landfrey?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McIver, we'll see you at the next case and we will start with the staff report, please.
Give me just one moment, I'll pull that up. There we go, can everybody see that now? Good evening, Danny calls for the Planning Department. The request for zoning map change is Z2000018, Selby Avenue Homes, received from Katie Hamilton of Stewart for one parcel of land located at 1518 Riddle Road totaling 3.15 acres. The applicant proposes a change in zoning designation of the site from residential suburban 20 RS20, residential urban 5 RE5 to residential urban 5 with a development plan RE5D for up to 26 family, a single-family attached or detached dwelling units. The applicant is also seeking to change the current development tier from suburban to urban. The future land use map or flum is designated as low-density residential or, which is four dwelling units or lesser, four dwelling units or acre or less. If the zoning and tier boundary changes are approved, the recommended flum proposed is medium-density residential at six to 12 dwelling units or an acre. The aerial map indicates the location of the site on the eastern side of Riddle Road, which is just south of the intersection of Riddle and Highway 55 and just north of the intersection of Riddle Road and Fayetteville Street. Selby Avenue also dead ends into the eastern side of the site and the majority of the site also borders the American Tobacco Trail along Riddle Road. Site photos, the site is currently undeveloped, it's got a mixture of mature pine hardwood vegetation. There's a small clearing on the northwestern portion of the site where a single-family dwelling once stood but has previously been demolished. Area photos indicate a single-family development and also a place of worship across Riddle Road. Also, there's a single-family development on other, adjacent to other portions of the site. Context map indicates, again, the site is zoned RS20 and RE5 and being requested for RE5D. Additionally, this shows the tier boundary change is being proposed with the blue line on it shows the tier boundary change and the shift from suburban to urban. The flum is designated low-density residential. Again, the request is to go to medium-density residential, as is a lot of the land on the western side of Riddle Road. Development plan indicates the proposed access points, tree coverage, the building parking envelope areas, required project boundary buffers, and also lists the maximum density and required open space on the site. There are some key committed elements, those include that the site only be developed for residential purposes with all primary structures being no more than 4,500 square feet of habitable square footage. Residents shall be one of, or a combination of two housing types, single-family detached houses or attached houses. There shall be no more than 26 primary units. Development shall be provided, shall provide a public shared multi-use connection to the American Tobacco Trail that is at least 10 feet in width and subject to a determination by Durham and Go Triangle on the need for transit-related improvements at the time of site plan dismissal, the applicant shall construct a bus pullout and concrete pad bus shelter to go Durham and Go Triangle specs along the site at Riddle Road adjacent to the site prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy. There are 11 comp plan policies applicable to this proposed development. All are being met except for the flum policy. And then staff determines though that if the proposed tier boundary and flum changes are proved that this request is consistent with the comp plan and all applicable policies and ordinances. And staff is available for any questions.
Great, thanks for that report. We will open the public hearing. We have two individuals who are signed up both as proponents, Jason Clayton and Alden West. So the floor is yours, I'll let you determine which order and at a maximum you have 10 minutes total.
This is Katie Hamilton, I'm sorry, I think for some reason my name did not pop up on your screen, but I will actually be presenting to you first tonight. As Danny mentioned, I am the applicant for this zoning proposal. My name's Katie Hamilton, I work with Stewart as a landscape architect and I'm representing Jason Clayton for the Selby Avenue zoning. I'd like to thank all the commissioners for taking the time to hear our case tonight and I think it's a pretty straightforward case. We'd like to take the split-zoned parcel and make it a single zoning district while also placing a development plan on this zoning to limit the use and building sizes. And this proposed development plan is more in keeping with the development patterns that we see coming into Selby Avenue to the south of Riddle Road. As I believe you may know, the existing developments along, the existing parcels along Selby Avenue range in size from 6,000 square feet to the 20,000 square foot size that RS20 that is currently taking up part of the zoning would require. But the vast majority of the development that this lot is served by are actually in the 10,000 square foot range. So we think this is more in keeping with those development patterns and we think this will be a great opportunity for infill within the Durham urban area and have access to the trail network. And we're happy to provide those additional access points to the American Tobacco Trail. And with that, if Jason Clayton or Alden have anything to add, I welcome them to speak now and then we'll reserve time as well to respond if there's any questions from commissioners.
Thank you.
So, can you hear me? This is Jason.
Yes.
My name is Jason Clayton, I am the owner of the subject parcel. I am a small developer based in Orange County with experience with development in Durham. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration on this matter and I'll defer my time, but I'm certainly available for any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Alden West, you're welcome to speak as well if you would like.
Yeah, hi, I'm Alden West, I'm a civil engineer with Stewart and I'm representing Jason and I don't have anything else to add beyond what's already been said, thank you.
Thanks to all of you. That's it for individuals who signed up in advance. As always, I want to give anyone else the opportunity to speak to this particular case. So again, if you would like to speak on this case, you can digitally raise your hand by pressing star nine and then we can call on you. I don't see anyone else looking to speak on this item, so we will close the public hearing and commissioners, we'll move to you, Commissioner Williams, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Chair Busby. As always, I have massive concerns about the amount of traffic that will be generated on Riddle Road, even though this parcel is available and I'm pretty sure that there are other things that could be done on this site. But in all fairness, Riddle Road is a two-lane road from 55 to Ellis to Fayetteville and once you cross over Highway 55, this neighborhood would pretty much sit right before or right after a four-way stop. The drop-off from Riddle Road, from, on Riddle Road from Highway 55 to their four-way stop is pretty dramatic. There's a church right there, there's, I think there's a gathering house, I don't know if it's a mop, not a monastery, please forgive me. There's, there's a house that sits over there on a, on a corner, it's a meeting house and I don't know if it's still active. But the drop-off is about 10 to 15 feet below grade on the right side of that road and the traffic there, because it's just a four-way stop, is tremendous. It hasn't been as bad due to COVID and the amount of travel. But I know that we're going to be building in a new neighborhood in this area and the traffic impact will be grossly, I guess, impacted. And I just have concerns about this neighborhood being placed there and I'm sure that infill is important in Durham as it is everywhere else at this given time. But I just don't believe that this area can handle more residential traffic since there were approximately three major subdivisions that were just built off Ellis Road where Riddle Road deads and there's no traffic light there. There's only a stop sign with flowing a traffic on Ellis and then you would turn onto Riddle Road in either direction to make a four-way stop as Riddle Road intersects with South Austin Avenue and then the next traffic light you get to is NC Highway 55 at Riddle and there's only road improvements at the end of Riddle Road as you approach Fayetteville Road. I don't believe that just by adding a bus stop in this area which will further impact traffic because there is no drop-off lane, there's no pull-over lane where the bus could pull over to pick up passengers, is going to help. You're going to further congest this area with traffic both to and from this residential area and there's relatively fast access to Highway 147 if you were to take Ellis Road to 147 but then there's another set of congestion that you're gonna run into into that aspect and I think that this just thoroughly compacts the problem, like it's adding to it. And I know that you're capable of doing it, but I don't know that it should be done in this area. And I know that another developer, even with a development plan, may come in, but I'm going to have the same concerns because there are major road improvements that need to occur in this area to handle the traffic that's already present, not to mention the amount of traffic that is going to be generated by putting yet another residential subdivision in this area for already existing neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, so I share some of Commissioner Williams's concerns, but my biggest concern about this, well, let me begin by saying, even if I were interested in this rezoning, which I'm not, I would start by noting that the design commitments for this project, especially in such a constrained area with one access point in and out, in my opinion are wholly inadequate just as a matter of development plan rezoning. But that's not why I'm voting against this project, I'm voting against this project because I object to changing the tier boundary. This project is a suburban tier project. The only way into and out of it is through the suburban tier. It has no connection or communication with the urban tier except for that you can walk to it. I believe that the tier boundary where it is now makes sense. I would feel differently if you could get from Riddle Road in a car to this project, which you can't. And I'm not proposing that we change things so that you can. This property is in the suburban tier, it should be in the suburban tier. I think we can talk about whether or not how it's zoned in the suburban tier is correct, but changing it to the urban tier when it in fact has no communication with the suburban tier, in my opinion, is, is the wrong way to go. I mean, I'd like to see infill development here and I think there's lots of things we can do with inside the zones that are available in the suburban tier. If we were going to move the tier boundary, I wouldn't move it a notch or a little tooth at a time. I would try to find a new suburban, urban tier boundary somewhere else so that it makes sense. But essentially, if we approve this rezoning, we're essentially pulling out a little piece of the urban tier and plucking it down in the suburban tier. I don't think it's consistent with what our tier philosophy is as it's expressed in the comprehensive plan and I don't think it promotes a consistent or smooth transition of uses. So for that reason, I'm voting against this, I just don't think this is fixable as long as a tier boundary change is required. I mean, if you look at the map, the only way in and out of this is Selby. And to get to Selby, which is in the suburban tier, you have to drive around through the urban tier on a couple of other streets to get there. So I just don't, I think that we have a sensible urban suburban tier boundary and we ought to leave it alone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Amendolia?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with a lot of the comments said already tonight. Driving past this property yesterday, I thought this is an odd place to consider adding to the urban tier and, or I don't know that I would say that this proposal meets the comprehensive plan policy 2.2.3A. To me, it doesn't have proximity of uses apart from the Tobacco Trail itself, which granted is good, but I don't see a lot of walkability to commercial uses or other necessities for folks that'll be living here. They'll still be driving significant distances to get to those things and because of this, I will be voting no on this proposal, thanks.
Thank you. While I wait to see if any other commissioners would like to speak or ask questions, I did have one question for the applicant team. I was just curious if there was a neighborhood meeting, either was one required or did one take place? And then I'm curious to hear about any additional feedback that you've received from, from the neighbors.
Yes, thank you very much for your question. We did have multiple neighborhood meetings. We had, the first one was not extremely well attended and they, the first meeting did not result in very many concerns. And the second meeting we had was with actually the neighborhood to the southwest of us. They had not been informed of the meeting to the extent necessary. So Emory Woods, or we met city standards as far as necessary notifications, but Emory Woods contacted us and asked to have a separate meeting with them. So we had a secondary meeting and the concerns that they brought up were downstream flooding, which we spoke to them about, the fact that we are installing a stormwater detention device to help mitigate those issues. We understand that, you know, a chunk of their neighborhood is actually in the floodplain as currently developed, but we have assured them that we will not be contributing to that and our civil engineering team is available if you have questions regarding that. And then the other concerns they had actually were that the American Tobacco Trail currently, they do not feel is safe. They have a lot of safety concerns there. We reached out to the city of Durham in multiple departments to determine what we could do to help make the Tobacco Trail feel safer. We were informed that currently it meets city standards for maintenance and there is no fund that we can pay into for the city to maintain the trail to a higher standard than what is the city standard. They just don't have a mechanism for us doing that and it would set a precedent that would, you know, require that level of maintenance everywhere. So there's no real mechanism for us to contribute to trail maintenance at this time through the zoning commitments. We can do it as a separate matter with a private nonprofit, but it cannot be included in the zoning. And those, and then the, the traffic, speaking to Commissioner Williams's concerns, traffic was brought up, you know, we did note that we really above and beyond what is currently allowed by the RE5 RS20 zoning, we're not significantly increasing the allowable number of units as it is currently RE5. We could do, the north side of the proposed cul-de-sac can be what we are going to propose for the entire development. We're just trying to make it all be consistent within that extension of Selby Avenue into a proposed cul-de-sac. And we were hopeful that because we're not adding another intersection or using the existing Kirby Street intersection that there won't be another slowdown point on Riddle Road for the increasing congestion here. So those were the main concerns that were brought up and how we address them.
Yeah, I appreciate the background on all of that. I know you did send us an email the other day, which was also helpful, but it's good to get a summary on the record. Commissioner Landfrey?
Thank you. Yeah, in response to the concerns about traffic, I share a concern that Riddle Road is just a two-lane road and it doesn't have sidewalks in this particular area. But I also think it's important to note that the proximity to the American Tobacco Trail and the connection to that trail would actually make this one of the most bikeable and walkable living situations in this part of Durham. You know, a person could access Food Lion and Sea Central downtown, also go south on the Tobacco Trail for that reason, because I think it's critically important that Durham invest in housing where you can access things not in a car. For me, this clears that bar despite some of the valid concerns, you know, my fellow commissioners have raised. So I do plan to vote in favor of this development, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any, Commissioner Williams, I see your hand raised again. I just want to make sure other commissioners can speak if they haven't so far. Commissioner Cutright?
Thanks, Chair Busby. I had a question about the, from the, the development side. If, if you don't have approval to change it to the suburban tier, what's your, what's your count, unit count in that case? Or I assume you've planned that out. So what's your unit count in that case that you don't have the zoning change?
Yeah, so let me verify 100%, but I believe it was a, between 18 and 20 units was what we would end up with without the zoning change.
Okay, thank you, and so we're talking, this gets you an incremental five units or, or so on this plan. The other question I had is about cost of these homes. Looks like you're going to do about, it says about something less than 4,4,500 square feet. I mean, that's a massive house, obviously. What's, if you could talk to me a little bit about what size homes you'd be building, affordability? If you can price it on a price per square foot basis, that'd be helpful as opposed to absolute price. If you could talk to me a little bit about that, that'd be helpful.
So I'll defer to Jason on the pricing, but as far as the 4,500 square foot, that is for the attached units. So that would be two houses that would total 4,500 square feet. We would not have single units that were that large. And I was just trying to keep the commitment to not be. to ensure that the neighbors were aware we aren't building, you know, ginormous complexes out here, because that was another concern. And Jason, did you want to speak to the pricing?
Great. Any additional questions, Commissioner Cutright? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Kenshin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Busby. I think I read in the packet that it was two fifty three hundred fifty thousand dollars per unit, but I think you declined to speak to affordability. Is that not what was in the packet? And the reason I'm asking is because, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Landfrey. This is, I mean, we can get that price point. That missing middle is what we need in Durham so desperately. And you know, pretty soon we would be no affordability at all if we don't do something about the missing middle. And that kind of access to the trail would make it ideal. So that too, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Williams about the traffic and the issues there on that stretch of Durham. But the trade off was going to be if we can get some affordable housing there with ideal access to the to the to the trail. So I'm just kind of confirming that I did, I may have made a mistake, but I thought I read the price point of two fifty in the reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenshin. I I believe Mr. Clayton was trying to speak earlier and I'm sorry, I think I cut you off inadvertently, so.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, towards yours to answer the question.
Yeah, so correct. Mr. Kitchen, so as a as a single family attached structure. Excuse me. You know, you know, we would be looking at a starting price in 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 or around that two hundred fifty thousand dollar per side amount, which would provide for some some relatively affordable housing on the other side of the road, which is zone for single family homes, those homes would be in the threes. So just by nature of of the pricing, you know, one's going to be more affordable than the other. And the single family attached, which is part of expanding housing choices and that initiative would allow for for incrementally more units of of housing below three hundred thousand. You know, and that, you know, starting in the in that two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. And, you know, it's a it's a one car garage townhouse style unit at eighteen hundred square feet with three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. I don't know if you're familiar with South Point Station, which is on Barbie Road. That's a development I completed recently. It's a, it's north of forty and fifty four. And this unit is slightly larger than than our small unit there, which was sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. Which is a my opinion, very livable unit. And to your point, is significantly less expensive than than a single family house, which would be in the threes. And would likely be twenty four to twenty eight hundred square feet, though I I I, you know, I haven't really decided on exactly what that house would be. But that would have a two car garage, it would be for a larger family, but would be in the probably the three twenty five to three fifty range.
Any follow up questions, Commissioner Kenshin? Great, thank you.
Thank you, that was a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Commissioner Baker.
Just a couple of quick questions for the applicant. My first question is whether the applicant is planning on using green building practices or or any energy efficient practices in their development?
I I do as a matter of course. I believe strongly in in energy efficiency in housing. So there are a lot of of features that that tend not to be marketed fully to the end user, but we do as it relates to the tight envelope using resilient materials in the building construction to reflect heat off the roofing systems, obviously meaning the codes as it relates to our values using, you know, an energy efficient window and energy efficient appliances. Past that, to be fully, you know, frankly, it's very, very expensive. And that that tends to not really align with with housing that can be relatively affordable. But there's a lot you can do in the building envelope to make it very efficient, either by code or by choice. And when I build, I do a mixture of the two.
Great, thanks. And as always, you know, I think I'm not just speaking for myself when I say that we would like to see more energy efficiency and and green building practices. The other thing relates to design and I think, you know, I think Commissioner Miller brought up made some comments that I agree with about about design, design commitments. But just out of curiosity, a question to the applicant is are are these are these units, are they going to be, are they going to have garages on the front, sort of snout nose houses? Or are we looking at front porches with garages in the rear?
They're going to be front loaded garages. It's the, it's frankly, the only way in this. You know, in an in an attached product in this zoning, which tends to be relatively small lots in order to get a garage in into the into the structure. So yes, it it'll it'll, they'll look fairly similar to a significant amount of the townhomes that are built in the triangle and specifically in Durham on fifty five or along the fifty four corridor, the Barbie Road corridor.
Okay, that's that's kind of, that's too bad. One thing I'll say on the urban suburban tier thing is I I have never seen in any other city this system of the urban suburban tier. So for me, for me, that's not a huge, that's not a huge issue. I understand that it's an issue for other for other commissioners. I also think that this this site shows the the challenges and difficulties of of the mistakes of the past. This, the mistakes that were made in the built environment of the past and the lack of multiple uses in the area, the lack of housing variety in the area, the lack of street connectivity in the area, but that there are some assets, you know, Commissioner Landfree, Commissioner Kenshin pointed out about being adjacent to the bikeway. So I'm I'm on the fence on on this one. I think that there are some some reasonable things and some things that are too bad. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Baker. I don't see anyone with their hand raised commissioners who haven't spoken yet, so we'll circle back to the commissioners who would like to speak a second time and then we'll we'll move to a a motion for a vote. We will, we'll start with Commissioner Miller and then Commissioner Williams and then Commissioner Amendolia.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I believe that Commissioner Member Williams was the first of us to put her hand back up.
Okay, great. Thank you. I was gonna say I missed who did it in in the order. So we'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thanks, Chair Busby. I appreciate that. So my concerns are definitely with the residents that live in this area as far as providing security or upgrading issues with the American Tobacco Trail. I don't think anyone on this plan and commission actually travels on that American Tobacco Trail because I live in this area. And I run on that American Tobacco Trail, but I no longer do because this portion of the American Tobacco Trail goes behind Shepherd into a dark wooded area that abuts a creek. One end of it dumps out at the base of Hillside High School parking lot and then continues across Riddle Road. And if you go down far enough, you'll pick up South Point. The other portion of this splits off and it picks up on Fable Road by the Chicken Hut right beside the food line and goes behind the projects in the lower income apartments that are on actually East Pilot Street and Cornwallis Project. So though it may be convenient for somebody to bike, it's definitely not safe for you to travel on this particular area. That's the reason why crime is so high on the American Tobacco Trail, because people can disappear in this area and they have failed to get caught. People are constantly being robbed and there's really nothing anyone can do. So the trade off for traffic on in a car for safety and driving is to put yourself in jeopardy to travel on the American tra- Tobacco Trail by foot. That's the reason why you don't see many people on bikes in this area, even though we've reduced Fable Road and Fable Street down from two lanes to just one to provide traffic travel for people on bikes. My second concern for this area and what Commissioner Miller was saying is the fact that it doesn't make sense. And I really am not impressed at all about what other cities are doing. I'm not impressed about Charlotte, Chicago, Atlanta, New York, Indianapolis. I'm not concerned about anywhere else but Durham because that's where I reside and those are the residents that I choose to serve and protect. And I say serve and protect because they're entities that are at stake here. These people may have children. By providing constant road connectivity, you you not only digress in terms of children's ability to the play to play because the lot sizes are already so small. Kirby Street is a cul-de-sac. It doesn't make sense to add entryway to another neighborhood over there. It does make sense in certain instances where you're in an already saturated environment to cut some neighborhoods off to provide a certain amount of security for the people who are moving into this area. Traffic concerns, that's up to the DOT, but as far as the residents that will be moving into this area, it has to make sense. And we can't keep piggybacking off of the need for density when density isn't always a consideration because the density that's being provided is being provided at what Durham residents and people who want to move there cannot afford. It's not affordable housing density, it's not affordable density, it's just density. Not knocking the developer, I'm pretty sure you'll put out a fabulous project. I for one, as a designer, I could care less what a garage is. I don't have a garage. I don't care. But the functionality of the neighborhood, the stability of the neighborhood, like Commissioner Baker said, green building and design, that it is extremely expensive. We know that. So you pay for it on the front end, but it pays for itself on the back end. And if you can get people to buy into that, as you're developing your project, you're going to have a very successful project. And it's a conversation that we need to have well beyond the initial development point because we're seeing things that are that are happening because of what we're doing to the environment. But overloading and saturating in a particular area is going to cause more harm than good regardless of the price point. Because you may be able to afford this on a thirty year mortgage, but the longevity of this, of these concerns are going to have repercussions. And I think that we have to be as fluid in our conversations about what we're doing for the potential members of your community as well as what we're going to be doing to the existing members of this community. A lot of the homes in this area are actually owned by people who are older and they're leaving. So there's other homes in this area that are becoming more saturated by younger people who are looking for single family homes that meet their budget and their needs. That's the reason why the trends in Durham are at a price point of affordability below two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But by building more in these areas, price points and tax values are going up. In the last two years alone, my property tax values have gone up seventy five thousand dollars. There's nothing I can do about that. But I still have to pay my taxes because if not, I will lose my home to the city and then someone else will come in and buy the property and develop it and rent it out. And the characteristics of what has always made Durham great will vastly change because some neighborhoods lose their characteristics along the way. And we have to be as diligent about what we're inviting into these communities as we are about developing sensible and sustainable homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
So I just wanted to point out to the commissioners that when we talk about pricing and when we talk about green building and these kinds of things. These are not committed things. And we need, when we vote, we need to keep that in mind. We, over and over again, developers tell us that their townhouse units are going to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It my observation, which is extremely limited because many of these projects have not come along, they are not two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when they hit the market. They may not be much more than that, but I was wondering we we asked for this information, we get it, the staff is now anticipating our wants and including it in the reports. It's very useful. But I've, I have to caution everybody, you can't have commit commitments as to unit prices unless you go through the affordable housing incentive program, which nobody does. And so you have to be careful about voting based upon uncommitted information. The other thing has to do with green building. I heard the discussion. I appreciate Nate Baker bringing it up. But essentially what I heard is is that we're going to comply with code, which which is good, but that's a minimum expectation. And so back to the design commitments, I do think good design matters. I want the neighborhoods that I vote for and that we approve to be neighborhoods that can function within themselves and in the larger community for a hundred years. And I'm serious about that. I think too much of what we're building in Durham today is ill planned, ill thought out, it's opportunistic. And it's not going to, we're not making places that people are really going to want a hundred years from now. And is that far fetched? Well, no, I live in a neighborhood that is more than a hundred years old and people really want to be in it. As a matter of fact, sometimes I don't understand it. But and it was probably done accidentally, but I do think that we we should not be planning by accident. We should be thoughtful. We should, and we have the power to control design to a certain extent and we should be using it in a thoughtful way. And and many design decisions, in my opinion, do not have to be expensive design decisions. These are choices. And as long as I've been on the commission, I have harped on design. Not everyone has shared my concern. But when I see a project like like this that has a development plan, the whole purpose of development plan zoning is is to be able to get into some of these weeds. And when we get a development plan that has extremely sparse design commitments, then I'm nonplussed. But again, my objection to this is is that it makes an illogical change to a logical tier boundary. And we have a tier based system. I hope that when we have a new comprehensive plan, we will have something that is a little bit better nuanced than our tier based system, but until we have that plan, I think we have to make tier boundary changes thoughtful decisions because it's not just a an arbitrary line. It's actually a zoning line. The zones perform differently depending upon what tier you're in. So again, I'm voting against this one. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and my fellow commission man.
Thank you. And Commissioner Amendolia.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll be brief. I want to first off thank my fellow commission members for this discussion. It's been really helpful for helping me think through this project. Especially want to thank Commissioner Landfreed for giving me better information about the bikeability of this location. And Commissioner Williams for bringing that into greater context. You know, I think I agree with the comments from Commissioner Miller. The design standards still aren't there for me and the text commitments, so do not need a threshold for me to feel comfortable voting for this. So I will be voting against tonight. I want to just thank you all for your insight and helping me from my perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner Amendolia. And I agree, I think this is, there's been a really healthy discussion. Before we move to the vote, I did want to give the applicant just the opportunity to 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 be able to raise any final issues before before we move to a motion. I I see a hand raised, so you're welcome to make any any final comments.
I just want to thank you all for your time. I certainly appreciate both your your comments and some of your concerns. I don't really understand as it relates to my ability to answer these, any of these concerns after the, after this meeting, but to the extent that I can, I more than make myself available to speak to any of you to continue to talk it through. I'm a former resident of Woodcroft community that I I know was and you know, in the eighties was was one that was both groundbreaking and was opposed. It's a community that is also very sought after and as as a runner and a member of the Bull City Track Club, I I've done a lot of time running up and down the tobacco trail. I certainly do understand that that this part of the trail is a little less traveled than the area south of the mall, but I will say that you know, the more people that have access to the trail, the more it will get used, the more the constituency will grow for the trail. And 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 the better the trail would be for everyone and it's. And it certainly is a benefit to this community that, you know, that I'm envisioning to have that access to, something that I, that I'm very excited for. So once again, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And before I accept a motion for the approval, my thoughts on this, this has been a really good discussion. And I hear the concerns that some of my fellow commissioners are raising. I, when I read the packet, I was thinking along the same lines as Commissioner Landfried to begin with and and what she and Commissioner Kenshin have said continue to resonate with me. I think this makes sense. It may not be the most logical development, but at the same time, we are going to have infill development. It works with the area. I don't think it's a huge increase in the traffic, even though that road is very, very challenging to Commissioner Williams' point. I was really interested to see, did any of the neighbors come tonight? And that was why I wanted to hear about the neighborhood meeting. And no one is here. And that doesn't mean I vote for something if no one shows up. But this would be an example where if there were significant issues, in my opinion, of the the actual neighbors that are now going to have their cul-de-sac extended with additional homes and then an access to the trail, I would, we all know that we hear from folks when they have concerns. So I I'm going to plan to vote for this. I do hope the applicant continues to work with the neighbors. And ideally, you can address the issue around some funding as they've asked for through the Durham Parks Foundation. I know you can't make that commitment, but that seems like something that's worth continuing to work with the neighbors and to really ensure that the the trail and the access to the trail becomes a neighborhood amenity that that everyone believes is safe and is something that they're comfortable using. So, but with that, I I do plan to vote for it, and I will accept a motion for approval.
So Mr. Chairman, then with regard to case, oh, and I'll just throw out, while I was on Selby today, I spoke with neighbors. I didn't find anybody that was aware this this rezoning was happening. With regard to case Z2000018, Selby Avenue Homes, I move that we send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
May I interrupt? I'm so sorry. Commissioner Miller, would you add to your motion that that includes the tier change proposal as well?
Certainly. Do you want, those cases, do they start with, that's an A case, right?
We don't necessarily need the A case number, but because we've consolidated it into the zoning case. But if you would, just mention that in your motion.
Okay, so my motion is is to move this zoning case with its attendant tier boundary change forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Amendolia with a second, and we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Okay. Amendolia?
No.
Baker?
No.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
No.
Cutright?
Yes.
Durkin?
Yes.
Kenshin?
Yes.
Landfried?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
MacGyver? I'm sorry, MacGyver's recused, I apologize. Miller?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Williams?
No.
It passes seven to five.
Thank you. We will move to the next case. It is case Z200010, and it's the Chandler Run case. We'll welcome Commissioner MacGyver back, and we will start with the staff report.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Busby, Vice Chair Kenshin. Alexander Cahill here with the Planning Department. We received an application for a zoning map change from Tony Whitaker of Civil Consultants. This is for the area located between Chandler Run and Clayton Road. If you remember, this case came to the Planning Commission initially in November and was continued for two months. And then in the January Planning Commission, staff asked for one more month to continue working out the remainder outstanding items on the development plan. This project is for 24.79 acres in the suburban tier. This is currently zoned RS8, RS10, and PDR 8.5. And the rezoning request is to consolidate these assembled parcels into the planned development residential 3.118. The current flum designation is low-density residential, and no change is being requested to this flum. This zoning is consistent. The proposal is up to 66 single-family detached units. Just as a refresher for this case, because it has been a little bit for the commissioners, this is the aerial map of the the case with Chandler Run to the west here. Some area photos show the existing single-family homes that are adjacent to the property and the heavily treed and vegetative site that this, these assembled parcels are. For the zoning context, just a reminder, there are three different zoning designations that currently exist on these assembled parcels. And this PDR would work to consolidate those three into the one PDR 3.118 zoning designation, which is a much reduced density from what is currently exist. Again, there is no future land use map change. This is consistent with the low-density residential character of the future land use map. So since meeting with the Planning Commission in November, the applicant did engage with the community. They did host a neighborhood meeting. If you remember, they weren't required to submit one at the time. This came in before the neighborhood meeting requirement. They went back and hosted a neighborhood meeting and began to engage with neighborhood residents. Some of the things that came out of that, that were commissioner feedback, staff feedback, and resident feedback were these commitments such as limiting it to 66 single-family residential dwelling units. And these are single-family detached residential homes. They added design commitments that include front entries that are roofed and lighted. They added that all units will have a deck patio or a screened porch. And then they also added four acres of undisturbed space, which will be provided in addition to the existing open space requirements. If you remember, the tree save for this was requirement is 20% and the applicant is committing to that percentage through the preservation of existing tree coverage and replacement. And then just to break down the open space and undisturbed area, the required open space for this project is 16%. The proposed additional undisturbed area, which is not required, but the applicant has proffered as a commitment, will be four acres, which brings the total open space and undisturbed areas to about eight acres of the entire site, around 32%. So staff took what the applicant worked shop with the community, heard the commissioners' feedback and staff's feedback. And we've determined that this is consistent with comprehensive plan policies, as you can see in the staff report, the public interest. And some of these considerations were key factors that were determined because of the committed elements on this project, the consistency of the rezoning being consistent with the flum, the PDR district really creating a more cohesive and similar intensity of uses in that area and maintaining the area's current context due to the availability of existing city services and infrastructure that exist in this area. And that, of course, because the applicant did listen to us and spent some time workshopping this development plan, trying to make their commitments as robust as possible, even with the smaller size of this project. And at that, this time, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. We will move forward and open the public hearing. And for tonight's case, we have four individuals who have signed up. All of them are part of the applicant team or proponents. And so we will, we'll have 10 minutes for for the, for those individuals to speak. We have Randy Herman, S. Morrison, Tony Whitaker, and Deborah Mangum. And so we can go in that order, or if the applicants have a desired order, please let us know, and we can go from there.
Thank you, Chair Busby, and members of the commission. This is Randy Herman. I'm an attorney with law firm of BA Folk. Tony Whitaker, the engineer, and Craig Morrison, the representing the property owner, are also available if they are needed to answer questions. But otherwise, I don't believe they intend to speak specifically. I want to thank Alexander for the the presentation that he gave. And I'll try not to retread any of it, I don't want to take up too much time. Just wanted to point out again that the specific design commitments and text commitments that we have made in response to the first meeting, which was in November, we've taken that feedback and and added additional details to the design commitments, which hopefully give the commissioners confidence as to what the project is going to look like. I wanted to point out specifically, we have clarified that this project is going to be for 66 single-family detached houses. So only detached houses, no townhomes, no duplexes. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we can now clarify, because there was a question before, the project we built by Simran Homes. Simran, you, many of you may know as a Durham-based builder that builds all over the triangle. If you want to look at a project that might be similar to this, they built quite a few homes in Stagville at Trayburn and are still building homes up there. That might be a similar design, though I can't say 100% that it'll be identical to that. The other item I wanted to point out is that we are also, although it's not listed in the text commitment, making a proffer for affordable housing. It would be a, I know a lot of the time it's done as a per-unit or per-lot. This is a blanket proffer, $5,000 for affordable housing. And not making a proffer for schools because the previous zoning for the property would actually have greater impact on the school. So the reduction in density that we are asking for is actually going to somewhat lighten the burden on the schools in this area. But overall, we think this project is similar in density and in style to the neighborhoods that are adjacent to it, both to the north and the south. The existing infrastructure is sufficient to meet the kind of minimal traffic that'll come from 66 new homes in this area. And we expect these detached homes to be selling in the mid-200s, creating an additional source of kind of workforce mid-range housing in this area, which is between, which is on 98, between 70 and and kind of the eastern end of the city there. That's all I have for now. Happy to answer any questions. Again, Tony Whitaker and Craig Morrison are with the development team. And I believe there's one additional speaker who is not a part of our group.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Herman. And I do see Deborah Mangum is with us. And Ms. Mangum, you are welcome to speak as well on this case.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually representing my mother, who lives at 335 Chandler Road. I think I spoke at the first meeting. And I appreciate you allowing me to to have a chat with you. So we did meet with Randy Herman on December the 3rd. The neighborhood met, I forgot how many attendants were there. And he was very gracious and answered a lot of our questions and was patient with us as we, some of us didn't understand all of the legal jargon. But he did answer everything that we asked, so we appreciate that. And so from my perspective and my mom's perspective, we don't have any concerns with the project. I'm glad to hear, I didn't realize that they they were opening additional acreage to 7.97 acres. So that's really nice to hear. And I also read the staff report where the bike lane is no longer justified. And I, we agree with that approach as well. We have no concerns. And we just look forward to, you know, working with the with the with the builder as he progresses if this is approved. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for staying involved in the process and advocating on behalf of your mother as well. So we really appreciate your comments. No one else has signed up to speak, but again, we'll we'll just pause for a moment. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this case, please, you can digitally raise your hand. You can press star nine on your phone, and then we'll call on you. No one else has indicated their interest to speak on this case. We'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, Commissioner Miller, we'll start with you.
So I think this project's a lot better this time, and I'm going to vote for it. And I'm grateful to the developer for listening to what you heard from a lot of different people, a lot of just different sources. This is a very difficult piece of property. And the way it is zoned right now, it'd make a hell of a lot of sense. And so I think that what we have now makes much more sense. I will say this, though, and and I, and although the design commitments for this are not written with a lot of words, they do actually touch on things that matter to me. I would have liked to, I do care where the garages go, but I think with a project like this, there's room for avoiding the snout house design. But I do want to say that at 24 acres, this project is right at the cut point where, were it any bigger, I would like to see some variety within the project of housing types. But I'm giving this one a pass on that simply because so much of the land included in this development is just not usable. 24 acres with eight acres dropped out of it for one reason or another, usually because of the difficult terrain and environmental features. It's really not a 24-acre project, it's a much smaller project. I think that's what's being proposed today, fits in with the neighborhood better. And I think it really matters in a case like this because this project doesn't have big frontage on a major road. You have to drive down behind existing development to get to it. So I think compatibility is an issue that really matters. I do not vote for projects because Craig Morrison is involved in them. But when I vote for projects for other reasons and Craig Morrison is involved, it makes me feel a little bit better because I think he does a really good residential product. So I'm voting for this one. And I know it's taking some time, and I appreciate everybody's patience.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. I'm sorry, give me a moment, I jumped over. I don't see any other commissioners with their hands raised. I just wanted to echo Commissioner Miller's statement. I plan to vote for this, Mr. Herman. Thank you for working with all of us, the the staff, the planning commission, particularly the neighbors. This is why it's important, I think, for getting it right and and taking the time to get the input and to listen and to make adjustments. So really appreciate that, and I plan to vote for it as well. Any other commissioners who'd like to speak on this item?
Chair Busby, I just want to, if I could make, I just want to repeat back to make sure that we're correct, that the applicant is proffering $5,000 for the dedicated housing fund. And we'll add that as a tax commitment to the development plan.
Can we, can we just confirm that, Mr. Herman?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you. With that, this is the appropriate time for a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, with regard to case Z2000010, the Chandler Run project, I move that we send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
And a second. Thank you, Commissioner Amendolia. So moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Amendolia, and we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Amendolia?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Cutright?
Yes.
Durkin?
Yes.
Kenshin?
Yes.
Landfried?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
MacGyver?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous, 13-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is case Z20020, the 2301 South Miami Boulevard. And we'll start with the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Chair Busby, Vice Chair Kinchen. Good evening. I'm Alexander Cahill again here with the Planning Department. Thank you for your time. We did receive an application from Mark Kolkendall from Good Work Architects on behalf for a rezoning request at 2301 South Miami Boulevard. This is currently in the city jurisdiction already. And this is for a .899, about .9 acre site. It is currently in the suburban tier and is existing zoning is commercial neighborhood. The applicant is proposing a rezoning request to commercial general. And the commercial, and the current fund designation of commercial will not need to change. It will be a consistent zoning. As you saw in the staff report, for the proposal, they are rezoning to bring this current non-conforming use, which is an existing auto sales and service business into conformity and then allow for the future expansion of business and other uses in the CG in the future. As you saw in the staff report, there's a wide range of uses that are allowed in the CG that would allow, facilitate this rezoning. Some of the photos for the site, you can see on the left-hand side is the, the business itself. In the middle, you can see the, the open space behind it and then a, the church that is in the background. And then to the south of the site is the single-family residence that is separated right now by a chain link fence. So the current zoning context you can see is commercial neighborhood. There is commercial neighborhood all up and down this corridor, and they're proposing to change it to CG. You can see in the aerial map, it's a little hard to see, but at the corner here, the intersection of South Miami Boulevard and Ambassador Drive here is where the project site sits. And then again, the future land use map would be consistent. There'd be no changes, commercial now, and that designation would remain the same. Some of the dimensional requirements would, would change, of course, if it's moving from rezoning from CN to CG. This means the minimum lot area would change. There's some change in lot width and the side yard as well. So some things to think about. That would all be reviewed and addressed at the site plan stage. There is no development plan for this case as it is just a straight rezoning. Again, I know some of the things that we're worried about is probably buffers. And when we get to the site plan stage, these will be addressed. But the current zoning district would not require a buffer because next to the CN, but it would require it next to the RS20 property. As you can see, the rezoning would actually make the buffer requirements more stringent. The staff did review this against comprehensive plan policies. And without a development plan, sometimes it does make it a little trickier. But with this specific case, it was relatively easy to review against the policies, and we found them to be consistent. And staff is proposing, recommending approval for this. The proposed zoning provides an opportunity for additional commercial general uses to support the needs of nearby residential and really enhance the South Miami Boulevard corridor. We believe this proposal fits in with the intent of the commercial general zoning. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thanks again. We'll move to open the public hearing. We had three people signed up, but I think one was a mix-up. So Katie Hamilton is listed under this case. I think she was supposed to be under Selby Avenue. We also have Rusty Long and Michael Stizza. And so if, if any of you are available and ready to speak on the case, we'll let you get started.
Good evening, everybody. This is Rusty Long. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Alex, for introducing that, for covering what we're proposing. And I want to thank Commissioners for hearing us today. We have a property that has an existing non-conforming use on it here on Miami Boulevard. We're like, we're trying to rezone it so that that is both allowed under the, the new zoning and gives the opportunity for that existing business to expand. It seems pretty straightforward from our end. I know there's more specific items covered in the staff report. Would be happy to answer any additional questions that you have. We're just appreciate your time tonight. I don't have much else there.
Thanks, Mr. Long. And Michael Stizza, you, you're here and you, you're welcome to speak as well.
Good evening, Commissioner Busby. Can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate everyone's time here. I'm a new business owner in the area. I joined as more of a spectator, so I don't have much input on this particular property, other than it seems very obvious in its use. Obviously, I'm a huge proponent of anytime I see someone expanding business opportunity in the area. So as soon as I saw this, I had to jump on it and just say, it, it looks good to me. And that's all I can add.
Thanks for your thoughts. And again, like all the other cases, if anyone else would like to speak on this item, you can press star nine and digitally raise your hand, and we'll give you the opportunity to speak. Okay, there's no one else, so we will close the public hearing. And Commissioners will move to you. We'll start with Commissioner Miller.
So colleagues, I'm going to vote against this one. I believe this should stay CN. Can we show the zoning map, please?
Yes, give me a minute. I'll get it pulled up.
Thank you. And the reason I'm against this is if you look at Miami Boulevard here, he's going to make it a little bit bigger. You can see that for, for its length and, and long directions in either direction, it's, it's commercial neighborhood. And this is the idea, we have a commercial zone where the commercial intensity that's there, the, the scope of uses and also how big the buildings are, are supposed to be residential in their proportions. And backing up to all of this property are residential zones. And I mean, the only place where you've really got a big exception is across the street where it's office institutional. I have to say, I do not like this planning for, for Miami Boulevard. I do not like stripping out, when I say that, have, have thoroughfares that are aligned to their entire length with a mishmash of businesses. I prefer to have commercial areas concentrated into nodes that are reasonably separated so that you just don't have, just endless sign pollution. You don't have endless curb cuts with people coming and going from businesses. I think we can do better. But this is the pattern here. And I note that residential properties back up to this. This is a non-conforming use. There are two ways to fix non-conforming uses. One way is to rezone them so that they conform. But I think you should not rezone under these, under those circumstances just to fix the use. It's got to make sense when you've done it. The other way to fix a non-conforming use, it, it, you know, you can, is, is to change the use so that it conforms. In this instance, there's a non-conforming use. And the great thing about a non-conforming use is, is that you get to keep using it that way. One of the non-conformities for this use is that there's no buffer. And if we rezone it, although the required buffer would be bigger, then because it's non-conforming, it doesn't have to have a buffer. And right behind this is a two-family residence in a neighborhood that although it's sparsely developed now, is envisioned to be more heavily developed and the streets are cut in and the lots are there. I hate setting up situations where in the future we try to ask people to live next to properties that are being, that are available for use for a wide range of commercial uses. And in this instance, CG, in my opinion, should never be backed up directly to a small residential parcel. CN, okay, especially if you buffer it correctly. That's why we have the CN zone, a step down. But in this instance, there's no development plan. There is nothing to say that this property in the future could not be used for a whole host of things that I think would be a very bad neighbor for residential properties. Now, had there been a development plan here that could have limited this down to a fairly innocuous use and to cut out some of the things in the CG zone that I think could make future uses there a bad residential neighbor, I could have voted for this, but there's no development plan. You know, you could have a 50-foot building on this piece of property. You could have a building that had uses that ran way into the night. You could have a much bigger building on this piece of property with, that generate, generating a lot more traffic. I just think that without something to cut back, those parts of CG that make, make it an undesirable residential neighbor and get it closer to CN, that I can't support this. It's inconsistent with the development pattern that we've established on the map, although I wish that pattern were better. I don't think this will make it better. I, and I just, I just think that if it should stay CN. And the, I'll note that the great thing about a non-conforming use, we're not telling the owner of this property that he has to discontinue the use. He has an advantage over his CN neighbors because he has a permissible non-conformity. But I don't see the fix for this is to, is to rezone this so that it, so that it can be used for even more than the properties around it.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Cutright.
Thanks, Chair Busby. I think it was well-stated by Commissioner Miller. I tend to agree 100% with his assessment. My biggest concern is that there is not a development plan. And if you look at the use table for CG, some of the things that are allowable in CG as opposed to CN, they just don't bode well for, for that particular area. And so, you know, rezoning it for the sake of rezoning it seems odd to me. And so, you know, for that reason, I will be voting against it.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners who'd like to speak on this item? Commissioner Lo.
Thank you, Chair Busby. Just one question for the developer. Was there a community meetings deal about this? Can you hear me?
Yeah, Commissioner Lo, you, you cut out, but I believe you asked if there were any neighborhood meetings associated with this. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
And so the applicant, you're welcome to, to answer Commissioner Lo's question.
I do not believe so. I believe this was submitted prior to that requirement. That's a requirement that was not in place at the time of application. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong.
Follow-up, Commissioner Lo?
That is, that's correct. The, the application was submitted before the neighborhood meeting requirement was in place. And if it's okay, I just wanted to clarify one thing as well. At site plan stage, a buffer would be required between that existing single-family residence and any expansion of the business. We just want to make sure that's clear. It gets a little, little confusing sometimes, but want to make sure that's called out. And then the other thing is Commissioner Cutright brought up some really good points. And a lot of the uses that are allowed in the CG are allowed in the CN as well, just in a more expansive way. But they do require, you know, special use permits for many of them.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Commissioner Lo, any follow-up questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, sorry, just to, just to, and you, you've probably already touched on this. And I don't know if this is a question for Alex or for the applicant. But just so I'm clear, this is a, this is a non-conforming use and can, it can continue to, to exist and function. And the applicant wishes to change the zoning so that they are conforming under the new uses that are permitted under the new zoning district and so that they can expand their business. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. I'm just looking, any other Commissioners, any questions or comments? I don't see anyone else, so we can move forward with, I'll accept the motion for approval at this point.
Mr. Chair, with regard to case Z200020, the property at 2301 South Miami Boulevard, a move that we send this forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. I don't, and there's no corresponding change to the future land use map. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Second. And we'll have the roll call vote.
Just wanted to clarify, that was Mr. Morgan II?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Amendolia?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Cutright?
No.
Durkin?
Yes.
Kinchen?
No.
Landfried?
Yes.
Lo?
No.
MacGyver?
No.
Miller?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
And Williams?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three. It fails seven, six, seven.
Thank you. Again, for everyone listening, that will still move forward to the governing body for their review and, and their vote as well. We will move to our final case this evening. This is case Z20021, Harriet's Place. And we will start with the staff report.
Mr. Chair, if we, if I may, before we start with the staff report, I did want to follow up on, on my promise to the, at least the public that's watching and those who are attending the meeting. This is a case that is important for a lot of reasons, but I think it's necessary for me to disclose that, that I am president of Preservation Durham, which is a nonprofit organization that promotes historic preservation in Durham. And that Preservation Durham supports this rezoning. And the executive director of the organization will make a brief comment in favor of the rezoning tonight. I've discussed this with staff because I do not live within the notice radius of this property. And because I don't have any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome, I cannot be disqualified under our rules. But I do think it's only fair for you to know that how I speak and how I vote in this case should be measured and weighed based upon the fact that I'm a president of an organization that supports the rezoning. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, and appreciate your transparency on this case before us. With that, we will move to the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Busby, and Commissioner Members, Danny Coulter again for the Planning Department. This is case Z200021, Harriet's Place. The item was received by, from Howard Partner with Howard A. Partner Landscape Architecture. The, the, for two parcels of land located at 312 East Umstead Street and 1206 Stockton Street, totaling just slightly over seven tenths of an acre. The site's located within the urban development The site's located within the urban development here. The applicant proposes to change the zoning designation of the site from residential urban five two to residential urban multifamily with a development plan or RUMD for a maximum of seventeen unit congregate living facility or and/or affordable apartment units within an existing building. Future land use map or flum is designated as medium-high-density residential at eight to twenty dwelling units an acre. There's no change to the proposed flum. The aerial map indicates the site located on the south side of Umstead Street, just west of the intersection of Umstead and Fayetteville Road, Fayetteville Street, excuse me. And and it's also on the west side of Dawkins Street between intersections of Dawkins and and Umstead and Dawkins and Littler Avenue. The north portion of the site contains the structure, which was previously utilized as the Harriet Tubman YMCA YMCA facility, and also contains existing vegetation. The southeastern portion of the site is vacant and has been previously cleared. And also, that's the southwestern portion of the site from Avery Avery Street. The area context, there's adjacent single-family and duplex development and also undeveloped parcels of land across from the site and around the site. This is showing a single-family duplex parcels and and also adjacent single-family parcels. Context map indicates that the RU five two zoning designation for everything around the area. And again, the request is to rezone to RUMD. And the future land use map again shows everything as high to medium-density residential in the area. The development plan indicates the proposed parking building envelopes, existing building to remain, parking envelope, existing driveways or proposed driveway, required project boundary buffers, tree coverage locations. The list also lists the uses, the maximum unit counts, the building heights, building size, building location, proposed impervious surfaces. The use table in U D O paragraph five one two requires that congregate living facilities proposed within residential districts receive a minor special use permit in order to allow the use within the district. However, U D O paragraph three five six D ten for development plans eliminate eliminates the use requirement, the permit requirement when the zoning is approved with a development plan. So these these features have all been identified on the on the development plan if they pursue a congregate living facility. The commitments for the development plan, the shall consist of affordable apartment units or congregate living facility units singly or in combination, not to exceed a total of seventeen units. Lots A and B will be recombined recombined prior to the issuance of a building permit. Public sidewalk will be constructed on the Dawkins Street side. Dawkins Street site frontage of parcel one one eight three hundred prior to issuance of a certificate occupancy. All strike all-site buffer easements as shown in the development plan sheet three must be obtained prior to site plan approval. If off-site buffer easements cannot be obtained and or where onsite buffer standards can't be met, variances must be approved prior to site plan approval. There are the site has been analyzed for the comp plan policies, all comp plan policies that are applicable to this site have been determined been determined to be consistent. And so staff has determined the consistency for all the policies and staff is available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. We have a number of individuals who've signed up for the public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing. I'll read the individuals. Most have indicated they are in support. There are one or two who didn't indicate where they stood, but we know that as part of the applicant team, we have Jarvis Martin, Howard Partner, Peter Skilern, who's with Reinvestment Partners, as is Blake Strayhorn. We have April Johnson. And then Elizabeth McKennedy and Amber Harris. And so, again, the applicant team may have an order that you'd like to have your team speak in, so I'm going to open it up to you and let you start and then we can call on the other.
Hi, this is Peter Skilern. I'm Executive Director of Reinvestment Partners. We're the owner, we're the single-member owner of Harriet's Place LLC. The agency is a nonprofit community development corporation. Our mission is to foster healthy and just communities by working with people, places, and policy. So as an example, we're a head proof counseling agency. We provide free tax preparation. We run statewide healthy food assistance program. We also do financial justice and healthcare advocacy. And on the place side, we do commercial and affordable housing redevelopment. And so, as an example, we redeveloped twelve oh eight Fayetteville Street, the historic, national stor- registered Burnett Place. This property was built in nineteen fifty-four as the Harriet Tubman YWCA. It provided twelve dorm rooms for student nurses at Lincoln Hospital while they were in training. It also provided a key community center for the African-American community and was site of some of the key historic civil rights organizing. The property was sold to Fisher Memorial Church. It was then transferred to the White Family and over a period of time fell into disrepair until it was condemned by the City of Durham and demolition had begun due to a variety of different legal proceedings. We were able to purchase the property through a tax foreclosure and with the commitment that we would redevelop the property as affordable housing. So our intent, as the development plan shows, we worked through a varied variety of different scenarios. And currently, the plan we're moving forward with is seventeen studio efficiency apartments with a congregate kitchen that can be in addition to the individual units. And we'll have some room for community meeting areas as well and offices. Our intent is to preserve the building from the exterior and as well as to document inside the kind of the important history of the building. We have received a preliminary conditional commitment of funding from the City of Durham for affordable housing, which also comes in addition to the request for affordable housing zoning here, thirty-year use restrictions for that purpose. So we're in that process and be glad to answer any questions as it relates to the to the to the agency, the project, our future plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Skilern, are there other members of of your team that would like to speak on this item or are they just available to answer questions?
I believe Howard Partner might like to say a couple of things and then Blake Strayhorn is not on the call.
Okay. Mr. Partner, you're welcome to speak.
Okay, thank you. I'm Howard Partner and I am the applicant for this rezoning request. I just want to speak very briefly and mention that in essence, this rezoning will allow the use of the building to be very similar to its original use. And so we're taking a derelict building and restoring it to a positive use. And I should mention that the area that the building is located in has suffered from quite a bit of neglect and not much in terms of positive restoration. And so our hope is that by restoring this building, we will also be encouraging renewal of other properties in the area. The restoration will maintain the original look of the building. And I'm sure others will speak to that effect. In a sense, the look of the building will be somewhat similar to the Witted Elementary School, which is a block away and has a similar a similar brick facade. I'll just be glad to answer any questions that come up and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Jarvis Martin, I know you've signed up. Would you are you interested in speaking as well?
Yes, I just wanted to indicate that I'm in support of the development. I own a property within the Mailin District District and have owned it for the past four or five years. This development would help to bring the neighborhood back to a positive situation. There's a lot of negative things currently go on over on Umstead Street. And by having this development, it would just help to reunite that area as well as hope spur other interests for other people to fix up properties there. So I'm in for in favor of it and hope that the planning commission would vote yes on this request.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We'll move to April Johnson. Ms. Johnson, I see you're with us. Are you able to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I'm April Johnson, Executive Director of Preservation Durham. And I just want to speak in support of you voting for favorable favorable recommendation to city council on this rezoning. And around two thousand eighteen, I found out that the city had was the building was slated for demolition. So of course, Preservation Durham went straight to the city manager's office and Neighborhood Improvement Services to 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 ask that they hold back and give us an opportunity to see if there are any other developers out there who would like to adaptively reuse the building. I I heard complaints from some of the parents at the Witted School down the street about the folks hanging hanging around the vacant building at the time. I was able to convince them to give us some time to look into finding a developer who would preserve the building rather than demolish it. And thankfully, they were able to do that, but I'm grateful that Reinvestment Partners took on the task. Preservation Durham supports this. We love it when a building is preserved that tells a special story in the in the community, especially when it comes to African-American heritage and cultural heritage, but also serves the community in providing affordable housing. And that's to me a double blessing in this project. So that's all I have to say, I believe. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Then we have two other individuals. They're both with us, Elizabeth McKennedy and then Amber Harris.
Hi, this is Pete Crispell. I'm Elizabeth McKennedy's partner. We are homeowners and residents of the Umstead Street neighborhood and live right down the street from the property. We'd like to express our support for the development. We'd also like to ask and advocate for community involvement with the development of the facility and the use and the management. If we're going to have a congregate living facility in our neighborhood, we'd like to be involved. We'd like to be invited to the table. We have questions about the gravitas of the name of the project, but that's not really here nor there. We we support the development and we support. We hope that the commissioners will support the development. That's all we have.
Thank you. And then Amber Harris.
Hello, good evening. My name is Amber Harris and I am a resident up the block from the proposed project directly across the street from Witted school. And I'm in support of Harriet's Place and the redevelopment of this really historic building in Durham. And I heard the first speaker's commitment to community development and what that means. And as a as a lifelong Durhamite, but new resident to the Haytah community in Umstead, I really hope that that community development language sticks and that we're not just using our words. That end of Umstead Street is tough. There was a lot of those houses are in really extraordinary disrepair. I don't know if people are, I don't know if we're dealing with slum lords or squatters or what. But I really hope that as Harriet as Harriet's Place develops, that organizations that are frankly in a position to benefit from that redevelopment further invest in the community. So those are and I think we want to think about what it means to have people living in a congregate living space when they may not feel safe to leave the building. So those are my fifteen words about the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
And that's everyone who's signed up. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, again, you can press star nine on your phone, digitally raise your hand. We'll call on you. David Crispell, I see you've got your hand raised. You are welcome to speak briefly.
Yeah, I'm I'm Pete Crispell's brother and property owner of twelve oh eight Dawkins Street, which abuts the what is now an empty lot that will be sort of egress and ingress for the property. I'm I'm also in support of the development and and excited for community partners to come in. I want to echo Ms. Harris's concerns or push and advocacy. For those who don't spend a lot of time on Umstead and Dawkins, it is a hard existence for many and I would like to advocate for considering ways to try to prioritize long-term community members and and how we go about finding affordable housing for people that have been lost in the shuffle over here and been forgotten by many other programs. So we would be super excited as as members who have been a part of that community for four years and have a lot of relationships to figure out ways that this could both serve the community at large with some with some needed redevelopment and life and breath while also meeting some of the real serious needs, the Umstead and Dawkins. You know, anyone who's been over there, very apparent over there. Let's let's say that.
Thank you, Mr. Crispell. And we've got one final hand that went up, Joe Novak, and we'll we'll take you get your mic on and you'll be able to speak as well.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am in the next block in Fisher Place. And in that area, those of you who know, it's all duplexes and they are everyone living there is either low-income African-American or low-income Hispanic. And so when we heard about this in our neighborhood, we became very happy that finally someone is doing something in East Umstead. And so we are in general supporting that. However, when then we started reading and we realized it says seventeen-unit congregated living, which is I assume some sort of boarding, like a boarding house, what they call it. And that makes us worried that we are hoping that they deep redevelop here and maybe families, the small families come here. But again, seventeen units, it is a move to the right direction, but we were hoping that it turns into a place that families can live here. So we are all families and we are all, as those of you who know, we are dealing with, you know, every weekend, we have to go to our backyard, collect the needles. All of our houses have been, we have broken into our houses. So we were just hoping for the developer to consider maybe include affordable housing in this area if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. We don't have anyone else who signed up to speak during the public hearing, but I do see the applicants have raised their hands and and they did have an extra. but I do see the applicants have raised their hands and, and they did have an extra minute or two. So either Mr. Skillern or Mr. Martin, if you'd like to make any final comments before we close the public comment period, you're welcome to do so.
Hi, this is Peter Skillern, and I just want to affirm the comments that the other, uh, people made. We're, that's the reason why we're in this neighborhood is to help make it better, uh, safer. It, it's, uh, for those of you who don't know on the planning commission, this is really the center for opioid use, uh, at the corner of Dawkins and Umstead. And David Crispell and his brother Pete have been at the forefront of really providing, uh, service to the community with love, really leading with that. And so we're of course glad to work with them to continue finding better services for folks. I, I think to, um, to the point about affordable housing, I just want to say that this, we, we included congregate as a means of increasing our flexibility, but these will be studio apartments. I think the second component of that is as a nonprofit, we are invested in providing supportive services and quality management. Uh, and so this will be a facility that serve individual needs and do so in a responsible fashion for the broader community. So it will not be a rooming house. Um, so I hope that will initially address those concerns, but we are very glad to continue to working, uh, with everyone who spoke, Jarvis Matt Martin and Amber Harris as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Martin, your hand's raised as well, so I don't know if, if you have any final comments or if Mr. Skillern covered those, just let us know.
I do not. If it's raised, it's an arrow.
Okay. Thank you all. Uh, no one else has indicated their interest in speaking, so we're going to close the public comment period. And commissioners will come to you. And Commissioner Williams, you've had your hand up. We'll let you go first.
Yes, um, so please be sure to my fellow commissioners to write this down because it is extremely rare that I am elated about a project. And I am not more, I cannot be more overwhelmed by the amount of support that I have for this project. I, as, as an active Durham resident, I drive through this area at my own risk on a regular basis. My home church is Mount Vernon Baptist Church on South Roxborough. And this area is dear to my heart. My parents went to Whitty. And my mom grew up on Linwood and she, they used to walk to WD Hill for parties on Friday nights. This is, this just lets you know a little bit of the scope of how, how far down the hill this area has gone because it is very rich in, in history and culture for, for the city of Durham. Even that, that massive house that's right there next to WD Hill, the large white house that has the columns on it that just recently got a facelift, that's the Scarborough Home. So this area needs all the help that it can get. And to be honest with you, seventeen units is, is phenomenal. The fact that you're preserving this building, if I got to get out there on my Saturday mornings and, and scrape and paint and build or whatever the case may be, count me in because it's needed. And I knew something was coming because the amount of police presence in this area has been phenomenal. It, it has increased, the foot traffic in this area has decreased. The amount of, I don't know if, you know, there are slum lords or whatever the case may be, but I really was about to put in a petition to have the houses in this area torn down because there's no way that these are habitable homes and people are using them for other purposes besides living. So the fact that this area is being done something extremely productive and I know the quality of life of the residents in this area will improve. You will be able to go outside of your homes and truly enjoy what you're paying for and where you live. So again, mark it down, February the ninth at seven twenty-four PM, I am elated about a project. And I could not get behind a project more than anything that, that has been presented since I have been on the site. I am almost tearfully overjoyed by, by this presentation and I 100% support it. As a matter of fact, I didn't even mean to raise my hand as early as I did. I looked at the screen and saw my hand was up and I left it there. That's how excited I am. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Those of us that have served with you for a long time, we have waited a long time to hear you say the word elated. It's a big moment. Commissioner Cameron.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just want to express my support. I think many of us joined this commission to hope further affordable housing and we have a true affordable housing project before us. Um, it kind of cracks me up when I hear two forty, anything that's not under two hundred K, uh, be deemed as affordable, which is not. But I just wanted to, uh, ask Mr. Skillen, are you going to use, um, any low-income housing tax credits or historic tax credits as, uh, sources for this project besides the city of Durham, uh, funding? And then also, are you going to have a partner for supportive services for the residents of the facility?
Um, ma'am, we will not be using low-income tax credits or historic tax credits. Um, the project is too small for Lytech and it's not, uh, it's, while it is historic and very important, it's not on the registry. It really kind of doesn't meet those qualifications. The, the other funding sources in addition to the city, we are applying for a five hundred thousand dollars zero percent interest loan from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And we are applying for a federal home loan bank, uh, grant. But we do still have a significant funding gap and that's one of our challenges is to kind of, uh, as you tell, it, the, the market would have you tear down this property and just use the vacant land in the future to speculate. This, this deal does not make financial sense on a cash flow basis or investment. This, this is a mission-based, uh, project. And so we're going to have to find other mission-based funders to make that cap up. Um, as far as the supportive housing component, uh, we currently, uh, provide some of those services and we have partnerships with other nonprofits who do. So I would say that's probably will be a combination of in-house and partnerships with others.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Cameron. Commissioner Dirk.
Now, I have a couple of questions. I'm also excited about this project. I am elated to see the use of the Affordable Housing Dumps Day bonus, finally. It's very exciting. And to kind of, uh, go off of Commissioner Cameron's question, I also wanted to know more about the financing. I know you just spoke to it, but can you speak to the use restrictions that come with the FHLB money and the HFA grant?
Sure, both, but all three funding sources that I've mentioned, if it's subsidized financing, it means that it's going to have an income restriction on it. Uh, and that those will be enforced through annual compliance reviews by all three agencies. Uh, and so, I mean, I, I don't know if that essentially answers your question. Uh, the mix of incomes will be at least four units that are at thirty percent of area median income. Uh, and the rest can go up to sixty percent of area median income. Uh, most likely, most of them will be at, uh, much lower than sixty percent of AMI.
That, I, that's great. That's also good to hear. It's hard to have projects, to find projects with those lower income bands.
Yeah.
Um, and the, one thing that the, someone, an advocate had mentioned was request for priority for area residents. Do you have any plans for having priorities for neighborhood residents that are, uh, underhoused or?
It'd be difficult to offer that as a commitment, um, though it's a shared goal.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
More, it wasn't a request for a proper, it was just more of a request to know what your plan is, what your, if you thought about having those kind of priority bands.
Yeah. You know, to be honest, I haven't thought about lease up. I'm still at the zoning stage. Glad to, glad to take that into consideration and work with, uh, David Crispell. I know he's got some clients coming through his Jubilee Housing that might qualify for that.
And I, a question on the conget living. So can you just explain a little bit more? I mean, I know congregate living, you would have a shared sort of kitchen spaces and living spaces. But what the, what kind of population are you looking at and what duration would the residencies of the conget living facility be? Would it also be kind of on one-year leases like you would typically have or a rental property?
So again, I want to say we were not, we are not doing congregate facility. Um, we will, we will be doing studio apartments, but let me explain why we included that in the proposal. Our initial design was the, to use the dorm rooms almost as is. Um, and they had congregate bathrooms and they also had a congregate kitchen in the downstairs. Um, and that, you know, is great because you reduce the cost of having everyone have their own bathroom. So now, you know, you have three bathrooms, one on each floor versus seventeen. And when the pandemic hit, we realized that congregate shared facilities no longer works. That's just not viable. Um, and so that's the reason why we did a redesign and, and added, uh, quite a bit of money to the project to give everyone their own studio apartment. So that's, that's the original idea and then what we've evolved to.
That's helpful. Um, thank you for that. And then I had one point, um, just for the staff. I, on the analysis of affordable housing impacts that we were all happy to see, uh, that was recently added to the, to our reports, that I would just like to advocate for an analysis of rentals because affordable housing rental properties are really important. And I, I understand you don't have Redfin to look to for numbers as easily as for sale properties, but to kind of dismiss it is, I think we're missing an opportunity to understand the impact that affordable rental housing has in the neighborhood and for people at, as affordable housing in Durham as a whole. Um, and the need for that, um, that affordable ownership is really not what's going to help our situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dave, can I respond to that?
Well, no, thank you, Commissioner Dirk. Uh, we just don't have those resources to be able to find those numbers. Uh, I, I think on the, on the sales market, you know, we were fortunate to have Redfin to be able to give us those numbers.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if we can find those numbers in the future, that would be a great tool for us to be able to, to, to be able to offer.
Thanks, Commissioner Dirk. Commissioner Miller.
Mr. Chairman and my colleagues on the planning commission, go to the place in your notes where you wrote Williams elated and write underneath it, Miller has nothing to add.
Thank you. Again, I've been on this commission a long time. That has never happened. Any other commissioners who would like to speak? And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lo, I did.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Busby. And, uh, thank Commissioner Durkin for her question because I was one of those commissioners, maybe the only one, that wasn't quite clear what we meant by congregated kitchen, congregated living. I'm glad we made that clear, but just to do a listening check, that means that each studio apartment has their private bath and their private kitchen, not shared. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Lo. Commissioner Amendolia.
Sure, I just wanted to ask a quick question about, um, the intended length of affordability. There's a set timeframe on that.
Um, both on the financing and land use restriction, it's thirty years.
Great, thanks. Um, I am also excited about this. Um, frankly, like driving past this person in Durham when I first moved here is what inspired me to get into planning in the first place. I'm seeing the level of unequal development taking place here. Um, it's what drove me to do this work. I would love to see this be permanently affordable. I understand it's not always feasible. But I do think this area is ripe for development over the next thirty years. And so I do have a question about what happens in thirty years. That's not going to change my vote, but, um, that's something to consider for the future. I'm looking forward to voting yes for this.
Thank you. Any commissioners, Commissioner Williams, I see your hand up. I'm going to get back to you. I just want to see if anyone else who has not spoken yet would like to speak. I don't see anyone else. I just want to say I'm going to vote for this as well. Really appreciate Reinvestment Partners and, and the leadership in, in this work and taking the time to meet with Preservation Durham. I was thinking that when the two of you came together and worked out the details, it was a win-win, but I actually really prefer Ms. Johnson's phrase, double blessing. And so looking forward to voting for this. Uh, I do see some hands up, so I will call on Commissioner Morgan and then Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. I was looking at the property owners that are close to the, uh, facility and I just wanted to make a comment is a lot of them are not residents of the area. And I would think that the community, the comment about community involvement is important to, uh, to do this. So I could see this as a great opportunity to bring the community together and probably get some interest of people that want to move into that area. I think clearly it looks like if something could develop, um, we want to preserve the affordability of that area. And so I would, I would definitely ask the, uh, the applicant to consider that, uh, as far as continuing to keep the community involved and to help sort of guide, you know, how this, uh, area would develop moving forward.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Um, I have a feeling that we're probably one of the only developers who come to the table with a community organizer on staff uh, and, and a commitment to community involvement. So we look forward to building off of this conversation, many other conversations we've had in the neighborhood about moving forward.
That would be great. Thanks. Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I think, um, for me, a lot of the cases that we see can be fairly soul-crushing. And I can think of, uh, in the over two years that I've been on the planning commission, one other case that I thought, uh, this is good. And so this is now the second one. Uh, and so, um, just to kind of second, uh, Carmen and everyone else who's, who's spoken, this is pretty exciting. Um, but the reason I wanted to speak up was, um, just because I'm curious, I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Amendolia's question. So, uh, what exactly, um, does happen in thirty years, um, from the time of this, uh, project?
Um, probably on a financial point would be recapitalization. You know, over time, we need to be putting money aside to continue to replace the roof and the utilities and the facilities. The, what's nice at that end of that period of time, well, is that any of the debt load is gone as well, so your cash flow might be stronger. Um, but a large part of it is, is on the commitment of the nonprofit. You know, what's its mission and how does it continue to serve that? And that's our charter, uh, is to provide affordable housing and community development. And so as long as that's in kind of a nonprofit ownership status, it's probably, it's, it's heading in the right direction. I will at that time be eighty-eight years old and so I cannot give any assurances in thirty years, but that's the current format.
Yeah, I think normally I get nervous with the, the whole thirty-year thing, but this one doesn't make me nervous. So thanks for answering that.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Williams, we're going to, we're going to have you wrap us up and then we'll move for a motion for approval.
Yes, um, I'm going to make some of my fellow commissioners extremely happy with my comments. And that is, there's absolutely walkability in this area. The tree canopy will be preserved in this area. There will be sidewalks and community involvement because kids will be able to walk to WD Hill, the recreation center. And the food line and the compared foods are equally close to distance to this particular building. Transportation will not be impacted at all by the development of this project. Matter of fact, transportation will be greatly improved.
Great, thank you. Uh, and Commissioner Lo, I do see you asked to be recognized if you have a brief comment.
Very brief, Chair Busby, very brief. Thank you. I just like to make a comment and thank, um, Mr. Peter Skillen and Mr. Howard Partner for the great work, for the great work you have done here. Thank you for the great work you have done and you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. This has been an uplifting meeting for us, uh, as we try to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll, we'll have a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
In, with regard to case Z two zero 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 two one, Harriet's Place, I move that we send this forward to the, uh, city council, uh, with a favorable recommendation, uh, and with gratitude to all the people with a favorable recommendation and with gratitude to all the people who have pulled this application together.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Cameron, and we'll have the roll call vote.
Amendolia?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Busby?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Cutright?
Yes.
Warkin?
Yes.
Kenshin?
Yes.
Landfried?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
MacIver?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ann Williams.
Absolutely.
Passes 13 to zero.
Thank you. Thanks again to the applicants and everyone who spoke on this item this evening. That is our final case. And then Ms. Smith, I think you have a couple of quick updates for us and maybe a preview of some cases that are coming our way.
So yes, very quickly, because if we go much longer, we'll have to take a break for the closed captioner. But we've been told we can go a few more minutes without breaking and they will hang in there with us. So we asked for two meetings in March. We are still planning to have the two meetings in March. I will share with you briefly that we have a fairly loaded loaded itinerary for both meetings. More so on the 9th than the 25th, but we have at least one, two, three zonings on the 9th. The comp plan info item and the Omnibus 16 text amendment. And then on the 25th, we have three other zoning related cases. If you want, you know, specific information about those cases, I'll be happy to send those to you in an email later in the week. We are still finalizing the agenda at the moment, but that's kind of what you're looking at for March. And I sent out another email that said that we had mentioned this during the retreat last fall and the timing of it was just kind of not so great. We're going to need an extra meeting in April as well. We did not plan that. It's just our comp plan is ready, we're ready to have a special meeting to hold the first public hearing of the goals and objectives for the comp plan, which you'll hear about in March. So and then the public hearing would be in April. So I'll be working with you all to poll poll you, poll the members and find out when a good time would be to have that additional meeting. That will be only for the comp plan hearing. We will not have any of the land use cases on that agenda with the comp plan public hearing. So I wanted to share all of that and let you know too that we did have our new member join. However, he will be actually joining the meeting and voting starting in March. We weren't able to to make it happen fast enough for today. So any questions?
Well, thank you, Grace. And seeing no questions, the meeting is adjourned. I hope you all have a good night and we'll see you next month.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Night.
Thank you.